Yes, mute everybody.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna get started here.
You are?
Everybody that is there. What we would, what we're gonna do is we're gonna be-
Call the office. That can't help you right now.
We're gonna be muting all of you because some of you are talking right now. We wanna be able to run this meeting appropriately. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read a, read the questions out. We're gonna start in alphabetical order. And, and we'll read the question, we'll answer it best of our ability, and then we'll unmute you and see if you have additional follow-up stuff on that. So, alright. Are we ready? Brian, let's get going. First question comes from Peggy Baxter. And, well, I'll read it. It says, "We have already spent $40,000 for clubhouse remodel plans from our architect that were approved by the board. The expansion plan included enough seating in the sand wedge to cover the summer dining needs and expand the pro shop for additional retail space. The estimated cost for downstairs was somewhere between $780,000 and $950,000. Additionally, there is no issue with an earthquake fault line impacting construction." Questions. One, why propose a construction of additional pro shop building with per-square footage costs more than the range of $300,000 to $350,000? The goal was to help reduce the cost of our food and beverage department and existing expansion plan of the downstairs does this. It seems to me that we do not need to spend an additional $700,000, $560,000 base plus engineering on sprinkler systems, electrical, water, internet, septic to relocate the pro shop to achieve this." Second question's also on that, and we'll take them both at once here, yes. It says, "I believe that the proposed project will not be aesthetically pleasing. We will have a new building for the pro shop. A remodeled downstairs sand wedge and the rest of the clubhouse will never be updated from its 1970s look. We will have piecemeal to another project. What are the plans to expand that much-needed space for administrative staff?" So, for the first one, as far as building the new building out by there, the pro shop, when our team wants to-
Brian, can you hear us all right, Peggy?
Nod your head.
Okay.
Same.
So, the first question about moving the pro shop, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, a lot of that came from-
Yes.
Okay. So, the reason the pro shop's gonna move is so we can have the, all the space that's down in the sand wedge currently. The previous plan with moving the sheer walls and putting a patio on the upstairs was very expensive, and we got the estimate from our architect Craig Pearson that this is a more economical way to get the square footage for the desired restaurant space. So, the golf shop would have to move out of that space. And the cost on it is-
Can I, can I say something about that?
Sure. Go ahead, Peggy.
I think, I think yesterday you said that you contacted the architect two days ago and it's somewhere around $125,000 for that structural issue. That's a lot less than building a pro shop down there. That's my opinion.
Yeah. And he also said that the cost of benefit with the way the wind blows here at the club, you know, probably wouldn't be able to use that patio. Even though it's on the leeward side of the building, we probably would be disappointed with the wind because we did a study on how much wind comes from that way, and there's gonna be quite a few nights that you wouldn't be able to use that.
That's, so that was kind of our thinking on that, Peggy. Anything else there? I mean, we, you know, you're not alone in this opinion of moving it out there. It's certainly something we have to consider.
Yeah, I'll make another comment after we go to my second question.
Okay. The second question is about, essentially, I guess it's about not doing the clubhouse first, the upstairs. Not expanding for the administrative spaces and doing that area. Is that correct? Why we're not doing that?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Well, one of the things for that is we were focusing on trying to get that downstairs restaurant open to help with the costs of the food and beverage, you know, operation during some of those months where it doesn't do a whole lot of business. So, that's why we were focusing on that area. And quite frankly, that is such a large project up there that I don't think it's something that we could tackle at this moment. I don't think we could go and do the whole upstairs. I know there are several questions we have about when is the upstairs gonna get done. That's a, that's a lot more expensive project, and it's gonna take future boards to get involved in that and make some decisions on that. I don't believe that this board, in the short amount of time that we have together, because this board only has about seven months together, I don't, I mean, I don't see how in that seven-month plan we can tackle something like this upstairs renovation. It is just too massive of a project. I mean, you need some consistency on this board with the members on it in order to continue the support to get something like that done. Where we have a couple of other smaller projects that we might be able to, even though they are still major, like the maintenance yard and like the downstairs, that would have an immediate effect on our food and beverage, and they might be projects that we could, we could tackle with this group in the next seven months. But I don't know that we could do the upstairs. Anybody else have anything on the upstairs?
No, I think the only other comment that I would make is that when it goes to future boards, the, because all of the work that we're doing, considering doing right now, we have the ability to pay cash for it, and our reserves are gonna continue to accumulate. So, in a year or two, at the point that some future board decides to do something up here, we should be in a position where we'll have cash reserves to do it, and we can pay for it, and we're not borrowing money or anything, and stay debt-free at the club.
Yeah. And, and your point at the very beginning about spending $40,000 on this club remodel already up here is an important one. Because, yeah, I don't wanna spend any more money on any of these projects unless we're actually going to go through with it and do it. And that's kind of why we, kind of why we had this. Kind of why we sent that survey out, and that's why we, we wanna make sure that if we're gonna spend any more money like that, you know, I think we had to upstairs, just to see what it was going to look like. We had to because people can't vision. They can't see it, they don't see a picture of it, they don't see the drawings of it. You know, they can't formulate an opinion yet. So, I think some of that seed money was important. But from here on out, we need to actually be committed to projects if we're gonna spend that kind of money. And I just don't think that we can tackle the upstairs.
Well, I, I agree with that, Ray, and I think some of the problem with the way, you know, our boards come in and out, that that is gonna be a problem. But I can see us putting a pro shop down there. I can see the sand wedge getting remodeled, and that's gonna be the end of it for a while. And I think, you know, we're gonna start looking, I mean, you pull in and you have a brand-new building down by number one and 18, and you have a remodeled sand wedge, and then you go upstairs and it, you know, that's not gonna help with weddings and, you know, all the reasons why you're wanting to put this downstairs. I understand that. I'm concerned about the kitchen downstairs. I, I mean, the other board committed to not doing anything during COVID. Now, all of a sudden, we're moving, we're building a new building, we're doing this and whatever. And I agree, we need to save money, but I just, this went pretty quickly, and I think it needs to be thought out pretty well because you start piecemealing things like we've always done, and we end up with a mess. And I just, that's my opinion. So, thank you for your time.
Yeah. Well, and thank you for your opinions. I, I agree with you on a lot of, a lot of your views. I am worried that the upstairs may not be done, and that it will get stalled in that. And I'm also worried that that downstairs is kind of, that it does go right. I, I worry about that a lot. But, you know, we all, we all have some of those same fears you have, Peggy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to our second one, is Don Bush.
Is Don in the meeting?
Is Don here?
Don?
I'll read his question. It's not, it's pretty simple, it's pretty straightforward, it won't take long. It's, Don, it was on the survey, and in saying, "Limiting the comment section to 100 characters may cause important comments or suggestions that are beneficial to MLCC to be missed." That, that certainly is true. I would say if anybody has a longer response to any of those things, please email Brian or myself, and we'll be happy to, you know, pass those along to the rest of the group here and stuff. You know, and I'll repeat kind of what I said at the monthly meeting last month. And that is that we wanna hear from you, we really do, okay? I'm not being sarcastic in this, but the less you write sometimes and get to your point as quickly as possible. The one thing I'm learning in this job, and those that are out there that have been on the board will understand this, this job is, it really increases your reading each day, okay? If you wanna, if you wanna read some more, get a job on the board here because there's emails and all this stuff, all the time to read. It is just constantly reading stuff. So, if you have a comment on something, please, get to the point, say it, and then, you know, we appreciate that. I mean, just, but if you need more room, use an email. And if you need to vent, I mean, I get that too, you know? Go ahead and vent. But if you have a problem we wanna look at, you know, use an economy of words if you can. So, but anyway, that's, that's that one. The next one is gonna be Jenny Dale's. And I don't know if Jenny's there.
I don't see her.
I don't see her either. But anyway, I'll read Jenny's question because that also is kind of off-topic, but that's okay. Well, a lot of people had this concern, so, um, let's see. Says, "Hi Sandy, writing a question comment for the upcoming town hall meeting. Many of us would like to see the pool hours return to their original time of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and there are many people who work and enjoy the jacuzzi, so on, okay? Many of us would like to be able to use the jacuzzi later in the evening, after dinner, and so on." So, but we've already done that. We released an email, you should've got, that is starting, when's that starting?
Monday.
Starting Monday. You'll be able to get out there. Unfortunately, we can't solve the problem with the jacuzzi. Our hands are sort of tied on that one. And so, we're gonna have to wait till things get, just get better. But the pool use, we can't extend till 10 o'clock, and we're hoping that all of our members play nice out there and are not, you know, not getting into trouble and causing trouble. But, you know, hey, the pool's a fun area to go, and it's great that we can have it open a little bit later, and we will. That's what you've wanted. We've kind of been very cautious about making some of these decisions and jumping into them, but, you know, it's probably time to get it back open, and we're hoping everybody enjoys it. That's it. Alright. The next one's from Ann Fergala. Is Ann there?
Yeah, she is.
Ann, can you hear us? Okay.
Hi, Ann. Ann, Ann's question, well, first of all, Ann, you said, let's see. Oh, I didn't, didn't see the first part. You were saying you might, might not read this question here, but Ann, I'm gonna read it for you, okay? I'm gonna read it right here. I'm not gonna skip over it. I'm sorry if I did for the other meeting, but we're gonna read all this one. Okay. "How did we go from renovating the clubhouse to renovating the sand wedge, which was just done a couple years ago? I want to eat upstairs and enjoy my restaurant. I want to enjoy the view, the sunset, the stars, the mountain, et cetera. I do not want to rent it out to other people for weddings, et cetera. The restaurant is a major attraction to people buying houses here. Having, having it made into a catering facility is a terrible idea. It seems like saving $100,000 is a big price to pay. It amounts to $100 per household per year, and for that, we have to eat in the dungeon downstairs. Cut down on some of the golf course renovations instead and keep our restaurant." Well, I agree with you, Ann. I like eating up there too. I really do. I like eating at our restaurant, I like the view we have, and Melissa and I are up there quite often when it's, you know, things are normal and it's open. But there are some nights when we're the only people up there. And they're very, you know, you go on a Thursday night or a Friday night, well, not so much on a Friday, but sometimes even on a Saturday, it can be pretty light. But yeah, I enjoy it too, and I wanna eat upstairs, and I wanna renovate all of that upstairs. Now, I also have to kind of deal with what I can actually do, though. And like I was telling Peggy, I don't know that this board in a seven-month period is gonna be able to tackle the renovation that we're talking about that needs to be done up here at the clubhouse. It's a, it's, it's gonna be expensive, and it's gonna take some time, and it's gonna take a, it's gonna take almost a couple boards to be on the same page with this sort of thing. And so, for a short-term board as we are, I think it's difficult for us to tackle the upstairs clubhouse. I know you don't like the catering, and I kind of, I do agree with that. I don't like catering our place out either. But we have a lot of members around here that would like us to cut into the encroachment on the budget from the food and beverage operation. So, we're trying to do that as, we're trying to make a balancing act between the two, where we don't take the restaurant away from, you know, the people that enjoy it, and we also offer something else for, you know, parties or whatever. It's, we're trying to play a middle ground here. You are, you have an opinion on one side that I kind of lean towards, but we have an awful lot of members on the other side that would like to see our food and beverage cut out and cut down for, you know, three months out of the year. They'd like to see it closed up. So, we're trying to find some sort of middle ground for you, Ann, so that you have your restaurant to go to as much as possible. And is $100,000 too big of a price, $100 bucks? I, I agree with you on that. I don't think that is a big deal. But on this board, I can't think about how I would think about it. I gotta think about how the other 1,068 people are out there, and many of them don't want another, $100 per year to supplement that. It's too much for them. They don't want that. So, we're trying to find a balancing act between the two. And hopefully, if that goes through down there, that sand wedge, it won't look dungeon-like. I'm really, I'm really hoping it doesn't. But I get your idea. It does if you're looking out that sand wedge at those bars and stuff like that along the pool. But one of the things in there that we'd probably have to do is to take those bars out and put that clear, whatever that is, Lexon, is that it? All the way down so that you can kind of see out and you get some of your view. I know it's not the view from upstairs, and I know there's probably nothing I'm gonna say here that's gonna make you happy about that part. But, you know, we're, we're trying to walk a fine line here in the middle to make as many of our members happy as possible and to also provide the amenities that everybody cares about. Now, that's a lot of talk.
You're allowed to comment?
Sure, sure, Ann. Tell, tell us.
Okay. I think some of the reason that the restaurant is empty a lot of the time is its history of poor service and poor food. I think recently it's been pretty good, but it, it got a lot to overcome. Many, many years when people wait for an hour to even get a cocktail. That's one of the things that I think is the problem with the restaurant. I can't imagine renovating the sand wedge and moving the, the pro shop. It's gonna be cheap either. And I think that that's not really the suggestion or the, the, it's not gonna make everything right because the problems are clearly upstairs. The kitchen is too small. The bar is in the wrong place. If you wanna have a den sub there, you should have a separate door in and use the patuary for it. Then we could get both things. But I don't know. I feel like this is throwing good money after bad. And the other thing I'm really concerned about right now is with this COVID and the amount of money that's being spent on people. And my son was telling me that nobody's working in downtown Boston right now. And a lot of the companies are rethinking commercial real estate in those places. I am really worried that this is gonna end up being either a very bad recession or a depression, and I'm not sure we should be spending any money. Maybe we should somehow rather keep the reserves to keep the club going right now.
Yeah. And that's a, that's a very reasonable view to have on that, and I, I don't disagree with it. I think that we do have, I think we do have some certain situations with us where we, we have been cautious. I mean, we, we certainly didn't turn 15 into a par four or whatever. And, and from your survey, it doesn't look like that was missed too much by a lot of people. So, we, you know, I don't think people think we've, we've been going out spending money, you know, like crazy, because we really haven't. We've, we've, we've taken, picked some small projects. Now, if we do the maintenance yard, that's gonna probably be a pretty good-sized project. But in the grand scheme of our reserve, it's actually not that much, you know, relative to speaking. So, anyway, I, I appreciate your comments, Ann. You know, you have, you have some people here that agree with you and probably disagree with you, but that's what this is all about, and we appreciate you giving us your opinion today.
Thank you, Ann.
Okay. Thank you, Ann.
Alex Hammond.
He just- Alex. We have Alex Hammond? Hammett, is that right?
I don't see Alex on the list.
He's not on the list?
No.
I can read his question. It is, okay. Alex says, "I'm new to MLCC in July." Brand-new, okay. "I agree the clubhouse area does look a bit tired. I know that some of the new work being proposed to the clubhouse area, new pro shop, expanded cafe, new maintenance facilities, will actually allow for expansion in the patio areas above. What is the $2 million expansion on the clubhouse survey going to entail?" One of the things it probably won't entail is an expansion of patio areas above because that is a, something that had been proposed and was in some of the plans before. It, it kind of costed out as about $100,000, is that right, Brian? And the, and the thing about that area up there, there was some question about how much we were gonna be able to use it. You know, how much can you use an outside area up top that is kind of sitting, well, in a wind tunnel? So, it's kind of the problem we've always had in the patio out here. When we tried to use it for member guests and things like that. You know, you get a windy night, and all of a sudden, the roof is blowing out the thing, it seems like. So, that isn't in the plan, but what's in the $2 million expansion upstairs or the rest of that? I don't know. Does anybody wanna go, go into that? I don't wanna hog the time here. You guys feel free to jump in here, you know?
So, the original plan from the architect had three different phases. $1.8 million was the forecast to do new admin offices on the northwest side of the current building, a new portcage with parking, and level access from the parking area in front of the club to walk straight through and eliminate the handicap access through. And then there was, of course, the inside portion, which was, you know, moving the bar or leaving the bar in the same spot, but, you know, renovating it to more of a horseshoe-type bar. And we do have those plans online. If you go to the website and you can look at those plans, there is version A with renderings and all that as well.
Okay. We don't have Alex, so I don't, don't think we have a follow-up on that. So, that brings us to Mr. Ketchum. Is Mr. Ketchum there?
Yes.
Rick's there.
Hi, Rick.
There he is.
Can you hear us?
Yes, good afternoon, everybody.
Hello.
Hey. We miss ya. It's been so long.
Sure. So, a lot of the conversation going on is things that have not been made public. So, before I go to my questions and I place the information, what is the, 'cause I thought we were gonna have some kind of presentation. So, what is the plan for the upstairs? How many months of the years are going to be closed? You're talking about, you know, a major expansion, moving the pro shop there? So, we can have dining downstairs to what end? Ever are you gonna close the upstairs all the time?
I'll let Brian answer that. I think he's-
So, in the survey, there was an operational performa on there of how that would work. It showed the downstairs restaurant being open only May through November 1st. The upstairs would be open for comedy shows, different themed nights that we could do if we had member support to open the upstairs. So, in these, in the five-month closure period, we'd have the downstairs open every day from 6:30 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. Upstairs would be for events for the members, or if there was an odd wedding that we could capture, something like that. But it would only be based on business that we knew we were gonna have and members wanting to use the club that night.
So, so if it was gonna be just for events, then what would we do staff-wise? Would we just bring in catering companies for those events?
Well, it would, that would, depending on the size of event, sure, you would have to have some temp help. If it was, it depends on COVID-19. If you can't have buffets, then it will have to be servers for that one night. And the cost would be against whatever we hooked the event at.
So, we're talking about eliminating the staff? We wouldn't, if we no longer have bartenders and servers upstairs, they would open downstairs?
Yeah, they wouldn't be eliminating, it'd be repurposing because the business hours downstairs are equally as long for bar and when we need service staff downstairs, so.
Okay. Well, that, that answers that question. So, if I go along with that to my next question regarding this whole of the sandwich thing, I'm having a real hard time, and maybe I'm just not good at math, but looking at the numbers and, and we've got something, an email just the other day showing the proposed, you know, step-one proposal for next year's budget, and I understand it's, you know, it's early on, but looking at those numbers, the last full numbers that we can use, and I think it's only prudent to do that because we still have, you know, literally four months for a third of the year within the forecast year. We don't have big numbers yet, and I don't know how we arrive at $670,000 in sales this year when we've been closed most of the time. But that's what's in the forecast for 2020. And the 2019 actual is $665,000. So, taking that, 2019's up to the proposed for 2021 of $781,000, that's $115,000 increase in sales for the restaurant versus what we did for full year in 2019. So, that is a significant increase. It's a 17% increase, and I don't know how we're arriving at that number, how we're gonna get those additional sales when we can't get additional sales now. And then I look at the costs, our overall food and beverage cost for 2019, which were $817,500 versus the proposed for 2021, $957,400. That's a $150,000 increase in- That's a $150,000 increase in expenses. So you have $115,000 increase in sales, a $150,000 increase in expenses, and this, again, it's the preliminary, it's the first round of the budget, shows a $176,000 loss on food and beverage in 2021. So how that relates to $100,000 gain on bottom line after spending what would be when you take into consideration the maintenance yard and, or I'm sorry, the maintenance yard, the snack bar and the golf shop, which is well over a million, a million bucks, a million forty, or yeah, no, a million four hundred thousand dollars to, to, I'm not going to pick that, what is that? A million and forty thousand dollars to save supposedly $100,000 when we are projecting $176,000 loss. So somebody want to explain the math behind that?
Sure. Go ahead.
So the forecast you're looking at there, I agree with you that the forecast for revenue for two thousand, for 2020 might be a little bit aggressive, but you also got to look at the expense line. We're not going to spend $900,000 this year in expenses for F&amp;B. We're tracking along the same type historical loss for F&amp;B in that 165,000 to 175,000, even though it's COVID-19. So we have to remember there's still revenue being generated and those wages that are going towards that, i.e. the sandwich better than last year's numbers, and dining right now is takeout and delivery only. So those are the numbers, and we're not really putting a lot of forecast into that. We're hoping it'll be more like January and February. And if you look at your financial packet from January and February pre-COVID-19, the numbers were a lot better. So there's a lot of different things.
I agree, Brian, but that's, that's kind of not applicable at this point in time because we don't know how much longer this is going to last and what our, our, our sales will be or our expenses, et cetera. So it's, like I said, that's why I'm looking at 2019 versus the proposals for, for 2021, and the numbers don't add up. I don't know how you, you reject a $176,000 loss and then tell the members, oh, if we do it this way, we'll save $100,000. That makes no sense at all.
Well, to, to, look at that, 2019, we're subsidizing two full restaurants. In 2021, it would be the goal to have a restaurant, two restaurants, with only one of them being, you know, working for the seven-month period. So as we talked about.
All right, I, I, yeah, I understand your point. Like, we're talking about two completely different things. One is a sit-down restaurant, and the other one is a, is a casual dining or fast dining location. And again, it's, you know, never been to our benefit to do it, although with all due respect, the sandwich typically on an annual basis breaks even or loses a little bit of money. It's not the, the money pit that the restaurant is. And to Ann's point earlier, the restaurant loses a lot of money because people don't eat there. They have bad experiences and they don't eat there. That's bottom line for them. Now, I don't know how the answer to fixing things is by having one restaurant compete with the other so we can lose money both places. That doesn't make any sense. So I applaud, you know, at least thinking about one way to accomplish that. And, and, so I'll find you back. All right, so let me take you off to a couple of other issues that are directly relate to that. And the first question is going to be, how do you intend to pay for the pro shop since we don't currently have a building in the southeast corner of the parking lot? Will that be an assessment on the membership?
The, the golf shop in the parking lot would be reserved spending.
Yeah, it doesn't qualify for reserve spending, Brian. And I'd be happy to read it to you. Here's directly from the David Sterling website.
Well, unfortunately, we've had, our attorney has provided an opinion to us, and it also is backed up in the governing documents, that 10% of that can be spent of the operating budget per the board.
Right, so 10% of the, of the operating budget is $500,000.
So the board technically has the power to do that if they choose.
Okay, is, all right, so that would be finding that is the board and is the club ready to go to court over that?
Our, our counsel is ready to defend.
I, I, I'm very familiar with, with Wayne. I think he's dead wrong on this, and I think he's saying things that, you know, I can say from personal experience, he says a lot of things that, you know, we kind of want to hear. So that's part one of the question. And it says directly, you know, read directly from, from David Sterling, that, you know, the only thing that reserves funds for any, or, boards may not spend reserve funds for any other purpose than the repair, restoration, replacement, or maintenance of major components that the association is obliged to repair, restore, replace, or maintain. And since there is not currently a building there, we have nothing that qualifies as a reserve expense. And then there's also material alteration in appearance. So again, from the website, "Any repair or replacement that constitutes a material alteration in the appearance or of the development should require membership approval, even if the cost does not exceed the 5% restriction." And that's mandatory, 5%, again, for operational costs for, for capital expenditures, not reserved. So again, that would exceed the 5% and would require a membership vote. And even though the, the boards, it says right here, "Even though it may be an authority to put such expenditure, any significant discretionary change in appearance should be submitted to the membership four months." So, I mean, I, I can tell you right now that, that I think this is a legal issue, that, that, you know, I'm sure I'd be able to get enough members to, to push that.
Well, we appreciate the legal opinion, Rick, but I think we're going to, you know, and I, and I, I'm not, I don't mean this sarcastically. We have to stick with our, you know, our legal advice. Our legal advice from Wayne is what we're going to go with. And, you know, if he tells us, if he tells us that's okay. Hang on, Rick, I've been listening to you, Rick, to hang on. If, if he tells us that's okay, then that's what we're going to go with. Now, if, you know, hey, members have a right to do whatever, whatever they want to do. I mean, we haven't even said we're actually doing these projects at this point. We've just asked for the community's opinion on what to do. But when it comes down to the legal advice, we're going to go with what, you know, our, our lawyers tell us because none of us in this room are experts on the law, and that's why we hire somebody outside to help us, especially someone with the experience in HOAs. You know the kind of experience he has with HOAs. So.
Do we get that question?
That's...
All right.
Is there anything?
Well, I just, I was still, I, I don't think any of these details have been shared with the membership. And you're expecting the membership to, I mean, the, the, what was sent out for a yes or no reply on was, had no details. I was basically just an overview, would you support this, would you support that? And, and, you know, without significant portions, significant portions being left out.
Yeah, that, I, I agree with you there. The membership has been solely, I won't say misinformed, but they've been uninformed on a lot of this stuff. What's that?
I think underinformed is appropriate.
Underinformed, okay, yeah, I, I agree with that. And, but we're trying to fix that. This is part of trying to fix that, is getting, is getting out there, is that these projects are out there and then getting people talking about them and getting people calling in on Zoom. So we're, we're attempting to hopefully get the word out there.
As, as, as you recall from, and I've made this very clear in the past, when we were talking about the expenses for the, the drawings and for the architect drawings and everything else that you're doing, to get the information from the people. And I said, don't you think you should just ask if they want to see this stuff before we start spending money? And you guys went and spent the money anyway, and now here we are, 40, 50 grand in the debt for something that now you don't even want to do. So I, I'm at a loss. So with that, thanks for hearing me.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay. We are...
Debbie Owen.
Debbie Owen. Okay, we have Debbie?
Debbie's not there.
Debbie's not there?
No.
All right, I'll read her, I'll read her questions here. She has three questions. Question number one, regarding the second renovation of the sand wedge and relocation of the pro shop. It seems the cost of these two projects is approximately $1 million. There's a statement, potential savings of $100,000 a year, but I do not understand the detail in this estimate. What is the potential amount of new revenue for the relocated pro shop that is referenced? How will this money be replenished to the reserve account? What is the ROI on the total return on investment on the total sand wedge and pro shop project? And that's the first question. So as far as the $100,000 goes, Brian, you want one more time?
So...
Because everybody has a question on that for good reason. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to make fun of that question. There's a good reason for that.
Yeah, I think to be transparent with the ownership, I mean, the, the model that would be the sand wedge is à la carte. You have a cook and you have a bartender. When it is not busy down there, you have two staff members. The reason we have success at the sand wedge currently is we have one staff member in there. Busy times, we have two for overlap and that person closes. It's very expensive to have servers in the restaurant when the restaurant isn't busy. This eliminates the times when we have servers. And unfortunately, we would only have servers when the business model shows that we can afford to have them. When the minimum wage went to $25 an hour in Australia, every restaurant went to à la carte. It's, it's not, it's not the best model, but at least you can get food and you can get service at the bar, and, and the owners of the operations can manage that. It's very difficult providing service when we don't know if the members are going to be there or not.
Some of the other questions about how the money is replenished to the reserve account. Well, we put money in every year, I believe it's 22%.
I agree.
23? 23% of your dues are, are there, and they go there every year. And, you know, there's, when it comes to reserve accounts, there's always a lot of questions on how much do we have to put in? Do we have to put in that full amount? Do we have to put in all this? Well, there's, from my understanding of this, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but my understanding of the David Sterling Act on that is that there isn't a set amount that we're required to have in there. And you could argue that maybe we don't need to have that much money in there and that we could, you know, cut out putting reserve money in there. But I would argue that we do have a duty to our members to keep this place financially solvent, and part of that is being able to have a reserve account that can, you know, make up for some of those rainy days where a well goes out and it's a million dollars, or there's an earthquake and we need 1.5 million for a deductible. Or the building is 50 years old and probably needs a facelift and it probably needs to be changed over. So we, we do need that reserve. We do need to keep putting money into it, and that's how it'll happen every year, is that it comes out of your dues every month, each month of the year. So what do we have in there right now, Mike? This reserve?
I would say 2.6.
2.6 million, which is more or less than they've had for the last 10 years on the average.
It's substantially up. We've been increasing every year.
So it's a lot more than what we've had. So, no, we haven't been spending a whole lot of money out there. We're just asking some questions on whether we should spend a little bit here. I know that $100,000 is a crazy thing. How do you spend a million to save $100,000? Doesn't, you know, that honestly doesn't sound like probably a very smart idea. I get that. Even, even I can kind of see how that probably doesn't make sense. But it is over time that this $100,000 adds up. I mean, every single year, we're going to be having this, and we're going to have actually a better product than what we had before. We're going to have a better product downstairs than what we've had with the sort of, I don't know, the way the restaurant's open in the summertime, it's usually open Friday and Saturday, and that's it. You might have a special event, that's it. But now we're going to have a place down there that we can actually go to and have it be open for a while. So I kind of get that. The return on investment, when you talk about these things, these, these types of projects, you know, I mean, we don't write, we're not writing a business plan for this organization. We're trying to keep it solvent, and we're trying to provide the members with the amenities that they desire. There are people that desire a restaurant or some sort of restaurant type of service. And, you know, and there's some that don't want it and never use it. So it's, the return on investment is not necessarily for us the number one concern. Certainly, it is a concern. We don't want to just keep throwing money away, but we want to make sure that we're providing amenities for the members out there. So it's not like a business model, if you were opening a restaurant and going to the bank and wanted a loan on the place, it's, we don't have that type of a plan. Mainly because we don't run a restaurant. We run a food service. It is a food service for the members. And it's never going to make money, but we're going to try to get it to not lose as much. But that's, that's the best we can do. And that's the best that any HOA or any country club out here ever does. They don't, they don't, they don't tend to make a lot of money. And some of them do close up, just to say. Anything else on that, Brian, on the...
I'd like to make one comment, Ray.
And that with the reserve funding, we have a, a well-established plan to replenish our
reserve accounts and to build them. And to the point that Ray made, that's what provides a source for money where in six, eight years, we may, we need to replace our irrigation system. It's going to be a million dollars. We'll have the money in place to do that without assessments or anything. A year or two ago, we had an opportunity to talk to the number of banks in the valley when we were looking at some of the options if we ever wanted to try and finance this and everything. And one of the comments that they made was that Mission Lakes was one of the more financially solvent clubs that they saw in the desert. We were in a much better financial position than most of the other clubs because of the restraints our board had and because of the operating, you know, conditions that we operate under. The alternative to having a healthy reserve fund, which we have, is that most of the clubs in the valley face it, is that every time you want to do something, when you need a million dollars to replenish your irrigation system, you do a member assessment. When you want to renovate the snack bar, you need to spend 500 grand, you do a member assessment. When you want to remodel the upstairs, you do a member assessment. This, I've been a member out here for over 15 years. We've had two assessments, one of them 15 years ago to do the irrigation system because we didn't have adequate reserves at that point. And we did an assessment about 10 years ago to do the exterior perimeter walls because we didn't have the money in the reserve. Now, our reserves have been growing and we're in a financial position that when we look at doing the projects that we're discussing now, we're in a position where we can pay cash for those, and we still have money in the bank, and our reserve funds will continue to grow in the future to protect the club and ensure that we maintain solvency.
Question two. Will the required food minimum be reduced since there will only be full-service dining offered for only seven months out of the year? If not, why not? And if the food minimum is reduced, how does the impact projected ROI of the project have since estimated savings would be also be impacted by reduced revenue? No, we have no plans at this time to reduce the food minimum. I would say the food minimum's probably got to be one of the lowest in the, in the valley in any place I ever know. Yeah, United States maybe. And we're still, and we're still going to have food service. It's not like we're not going to have food service. We're going to have food service downstairs and it'll, and, you know, maybe for a special event or so upstairs. But no, the food service won't be going, or the minimum won't be going down. Three, how will the proposed renovation of the sand wedge support the kinds of restrictions for dining currently in place as a result of COVID-19 or other outbreaks of community disease? It probably won't do anything for that. Look, we're not... Look, we're not, we're not building a restaurant assuming that we're going to be on COVID lockdown for the rest of our lives. And I know when you're in the middle of it, it probably seems like it's going to be forever. But, you know, it's going to be over someday. And whether that day is six months from now or whatever, it's going to be, it's going to be done. And then when it's done, we're going to want our restaurant, we're going to want our things. We're planning for those things after that. And also cautiously keeping an eye on how developments take place because they do affect us. So, so, no, it doesn't take into, into account any of those types of things. And I'm not sure we, we could. I don't know how we could.
Maybe she meant, maybe what she meant was, instead of doing an inside renovation, why don't you do the outside? That's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, and you know, I, I get that. We've had people, uh, you know, suggest that we put a big tent out front, we put a tent in the parking lot, we do things like that. And, uh... Wow, you know, at 100, at 120 in the middle of summer, I just don't know that's going to work. But it is, yeah, it's difficult. I can't wait for this thing to be over. I'll be, I'll be happy.
Let me, if I can interject one second question to you, Brian, and that, like, her second question was, you know, reduce the F and B because we're not going to have full-service dining. That's a question I've heard more than once is, I think people's perception of the renovated downstairs dining area is going to be breakfast burritos, cheeseburgers and tuna sandwiches. Where when we have that open as the primary food source in the summer, can you describe the menu options that will be available and what the dining options will be down there?
I mean, very, I mean, it'd be very similar and mirror the current menu that we have today going out for takeout and delivery. We'll still be able to do prime rub, we can still do pasta. Reconfiguring the space down there, the kitchen space down there is 1,275 square feet. And the dining bar space in the sand wedge after the reconfiguration is 1,723 square feet. The current sand wedge for seating is only 700 square feet. So, it's going to be a full restaurant. It's definitely not going to be fried food and hamburgers only. There's going to be quality menu items that we can bring out of that kitchen.
So, that'd be comparable to the menu that we have now upstairs?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to Connie. Connie Preston, do we have Connie up there?
Okay. Hello?
Hi.
All right.
You know, I guess what I, what I want to say is, I ask a couple of questions, but at this point, I don't think we need to address the specific questions I asked. The concern that I have is demonstrated by that we only have seven people or seven memberships represented here interested in what's going on. We only had approximately 200 people who said they were in favor of the new Pro Shop, the renovation in the survey. The other portion of the survey is that none of the other items that were questioned about interest even got, uh, uh, in the middle, halfway, a five, a 5% rating. Everything was, people were less interested in that than they were interested in making improvements or putting glass around the swimming pool or all the things you asked. But specifically, renovating the upstairs was 6.71. So, it was definitely not on the high, high side. So, I guess my concern is, is with COVID and we can't have meetings and we as snowbirds aren't there. It just seems like we shouldn't be going and doing, now, the demand chart, I would totally agree with. But the rest of it, I just don't see it as a feasible thing to do with, with the board that only has seven months. I don't know why we can't take a look at the whole thing like when, when they, when we had the architect that looked at the clubhouse. We should still be able to have a committee and do it the same way that we did the Pro, the, oh, do it, you know, have somebody, have a committee in charge of the renovation of the overall clubhouse. Have it be a consistent plan and know what we're going to spend from top to bottom before we spend a million dollars. I just, I, I, you, there, you don't have to answer anything, but I guess that's just food for thought. I just don't think that that is an appropriate time with the board to go and spend money like that just because they think, I mean, I don't, I, I mean, I don't know. Because I don't think some of the, some of the dollar amounts that have been represented, I don't think they're correct. So, that's my statement.
Okay. Tagging on to that and sort of in line with what Rick had to say. The economics of saving $100,000 are, they're not true. If you go through those numbers, Brian, and I talked to Mike earlier today about this, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to fine-tune those numbers because I don't think you factor in the impact of COVID for the year, the rest of this year and for next year. The Canadians aren't going to be here. They can't cross the border. So, when that opens up, I don't know. But saying, oh, we have to rush to judgment to build a Pro Shop outbuilding and expand the sand wedge to save $100,000 in next year, it's not going to happen. So, I just hate to see us with this big rush to judgment, oh, we got to do something now because we got money. You know, we are flush with money. But we just don't need to go spend it willy-nilly on false economics. And that's, that's my take on it.
And I do agree with you, Jack. The forecast for 2020 is very difficult with COVID-19. You know, you are, you're exactly right that the revenue projection forecast is, is way too high. But if you look at the next line, the expense forecast is way too high too. So, you're going to have the same net effect of our usual food and beverage subsidy for the year. Could you hear that?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of that, Brian.
The revenue projection for 2020 is too high, but also the revenue projector, or the expense projection is way too high as well.
Well, I understand that, but the expense for food and beverage is a function of the revenue, which is a function of the number of meals and all of that good stuff. And I don't know what you did with margins in 2021 versus what we had in 2019.
We left them at 41 and 32, I believe, for liquor.
But, I mean, just as an example, and I, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty numbers in this, but if you look at the, the proposed forecast for 2020, so far this year through August, revenue in food and beverage was $39,000 a month. For the balance of this year, in order to have 670,000 revenue, it's got to be 119,000 a month because you only have three months.
Correct.
So, going from 39,000 so far this year a month to 119,000 is just an example of how impractical and inaccurate the foundation of this, oh, we're going to save $100,000 next year if we do this. By the way, if we do this, the sand wedge is going to be down, not operating for some number of months because of the remodel.
Correct.
So, I, I just think we need to take a little more time, get a little, um, better handle on number one, what is it we really want to do? And number two, what's the cost going to be?
And the, and the entire membership, not seven of us?
Well, we did have 355 people return that survey, which, um, for, for us around here is like a regular election. I mean, that's, this board got elected on about that number of votes. So, that's kind of a, that's kind of the normal amount that chips in their opinion around here on anything. And Jack, I want to share you that we are not, have you ever known Mission Lakes to rush into anything? I mean, we are not rushing into this, okay? We have not rushed into it. We are asking a, an opinion out there. And I think part of the reason that people may feel that way, Jack, is that, um, you know, when they first hear about the idea and they got all these ideas out there, you're like, well, you know, where have these been? I mean, who's had these ideas and who, I, I, you know, it was a surprise to me when I got on the board that there was all of these, you know, ideas out there to do different things. And so, I want those ideas to be out there. I want people to talk about them and I want people like yourself to sit down and go through the numbers because, you know, we have a lot of respect for you. You've been on the finance committee for several years here and we, uh, we expect, we respect your opinion on this stuff. So, you know, we're not rushing into anything, Jack, okay? We're going to, we understand Canadians won't be back. We understand as long as you're... What's that? Say what?
The other thing, when you, when you mentioned that we had 336 responses, I think if you look at the people that are attending this Zoom meeting, you will see at least three or four memberships that probably both sent in their, their opinion. My opinion, Jack's opinion, Peggy Back's opinion, I'm sure Eddie did his own. I would say the same thing about the kitchen. So, I don't think you can look at that and say it's the same as because memberships have the option of giving in two opinions, so.
That's, that is true. That could be a little skewed that way. But I would also say that it, our membership seems to have no issue with expressing their opinions on the golf course or to you while you're walking by or, you know, on Nextdoor or, or Facebook or wherever else. And we've given them the opportunity with this survey to express that directly to us. So, I, you know, at some point, I got to say, hey, these are the people that are interested in the club. And so, the people that respond, the people that talk to us and then, they're the ones that are going to influence what's going to happen around here. And if we have 600 members that are silent on everything or more, um, I don't know what I can do about that. That's, that's, that's their problem, I think, at this point. They need to, at some point, we have, provide them with opportunity, opportunity, opportunity. They got to get actively involved or else, you know, the 355 people from 250 households or whatever it is are going to run everything. And that's the way it is. So, they, they need to get involved. Encourage them to, they can still send us emails and, and opinions on stuff. But we're just trying to figure out if any of this stuff is possible and where we're going to go with it.
And, and again, I would tell you, if you look at the numbers with one being extremely wanted, none of the items that people voted for even got a 5.0. So...
That's all future.
Again, you know, I don't know how much the membership wants to spend money right now during COVID. That's just, I, just my thought.
Yeah, I mean, we, we just got those, you know, stats too, kind of like all of you did. And I haven't dove all the way into them, but I have noticed, yeah, when I look at those, all of those that are on that particular 1 to 10 scale, you'll see that one is a pretty big piece of that pie. And, you know, that, if they got, if our members don't have any interest in it, that's fine. Honestly, we're not pushing anything here and nobody's trying to, uh... But I got to say, when I have 75% supporting a, um, project to do in the maintenance yard, I got to think about that, that we got to think that maybe that's a project we need to go a little bit further with. And then maybe we need to, you know, put an ad hoc committee together of some of our people that used to be on future planning, some of the, you know, Phil Andersons and those types of guys in the world that are here and, and see what they, you know, see what they can do with this. So, hey, I, I agree with those other 10. It doesn't look like they want it. But with the first two, the maintenance yard especially, but even the downstairs was a majority. I'm not sure if it's enough majority to, to make any major decisions on it because, you know, just because it's a slight...
Thank you for your time. We do support the maintenance yard.
Okay, thanks, thanks a lot. We appreciate it. We'll, we'll see you guys when we get down here.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian, and as we get rid of this picture, if I could ask another question because one of the concerns a lot of people have had with, you know, all the F and B stuff we're doing is the, uh, the ability of Canadians to come back, you know, when that, whatever date that's going to be. Do you have any idea on how many of the 1,068 memberships, how many of our Canadian addresses and stuff?
So, in the ballot process, we really struggled with getting the ballots. We got them out a month ahead, so the membership office went. And we were communicating with 40 Canadian accounts, double-checking that, you know, did you get your ballot? And we worked with them if they didn't get it in time to make sure that they could vote for this election. So, the number we had was around 48 pounds.
Okay, so 40 out of 1,000 is half a percent or something. So, the vast majority of our members either live here or they're domestic snowbirds, not international snowbirds.
You say 40 out of a, our 1,068 or whatever it is, are Canadian? 40?
When, when we were doing the ACC, we had, we had about 80 people that were either snowbirds or they live in Washington or wherever. There are not that many.
That are in Canada?
Yeah. Well, Canadians and like...
Dominican, Washington.
These guys, they live in Washington and stuff like that. They come down for the winter. There's less than 10%.
Yeah, ours, ours was on Royal Canadian Mail only because the US mail was working okay for Washington, Idaho and Montana. So, we drilled down on, you know, the Canadian postal addresses. And it was, I believe that the number was just at 40 or just below.
But they're big spenders.
They, they do make a lot of noise when they get down here.
They make, but they also...
Some of my favorite members are Canadian members, okay? But they make some noise. So, maybe that's why I thought, that's why they're...
Do you have a sense of the revenue from the Canadian folks? Do they tend to be heavy restaurant spenders?
Absolutely, in November, you know, November for the first three or four months because, you know, they are only here for six months, so.
So, they get through their F and B minimum?
They get through their F and B minimum.
Okay, we got three more. Let's, uh...
But you know, that's an important financial note. They're not just 40 people like the 40 people that live here and never come up here and never... From a financial perspective, losing those 40 people is more impactful than just any random 40 people here.
You know, I, I could see that. That's, uh, they, they enjoy themselves. So, okay, we have Arthur Taylor. Do we have Arthur, Arthur Taylor? Well, do I have Wendy Scott?
Yeah.
In between there? Oh, yeah, Wendy Scott. Wendy Scott.
I don't think Art is...
We're going to do Wendy, Wendy Scott here first.
Can you hear us, Wendy?
Yes.
All right.
Hi, Wendy. Okay, we have Wendy's question here. Why wasn't a Leica-type scale used in the sand wedge conversion question like there was for all the other questions? It would have given a more accurate picture of members' level of agreement, disagreement, capturing the level of intensity. This is what you did with all the other questions. Well, I believe the, the reason we did that, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, because, um... We had two things that we thought were, were possible to do, that we possibly could do this year. And that was the sand wedge down there and the maintenance yard. And what we wanted to get from people was, do you want to do that or not there? We have some other things that we wanted to take a temperature on and see how, you know, cold or warm people are to some of these other ideas. And so, that's why we split it up now. I don't know that, is there anything else?
No, I mean, that was the base sense of how we were going to do that. We had two immediate things, you know, compliance issue at the maintenance yard and trying to get the food and beverage subsidy down. And one of the ways to get the food and beverage subsidy down is to only run one restaurant in off-season. We realize it's very expensive. I mean, owners email me and call me all the time that the sand wedge and the restaurant are competing with one another. Uh, I had one member call and said, I had the best hamburger down in the sand wedge. I really can't come to dinner tonight. So, you know, I can't get the takeout, I can't do the delivery. I'm already full, I'm only eating one meal a day. So, we're trying to figure out how to run the F and B for member satisfaction at the lowest cost possible. And the Leica scales from Galus Golf was more on future things, especially with hole number 15. We heard from a previous survey that it was the number one thing to do for the membership. But if you look at your survey results now, it's kind of further down the list that number 15 isn't so important to people. So, that was kind of the base. So that was kind of the base reasoning on that stuff.
Brian, I have another question too. I have the, you know, great number of clubs out here in the valley. How many of them run two restaurants year round?
None of them.
Well, they run four.
What's that?
I said, some of them run four. That's not that's not the question, though. And I don't think that's something that's that's being debated at the point at this point. But typically, when you run a survey, you want your questions to be equally weighted so that you get a good overview of what the the level of agreement or disagreement is among your membership. And when you lump the clubhouse, the pro shop and the sand wedge all into one question and then just say yes or no, that kind of gives people an idea that you're going to go through with this and you're either on board or you're not. And that's not quite the way our community is, and I think you're kind of finding that out. You were looking at it to see whether or not it was possible to do it this year. So if you're going to do it this year, then yeah, you're kind of going a little on the fast side. But with a, you know, with a Likert scale, if you would have broken those three points down into separate questions and then use the Likert scale, you would have a lot more parallel of an instrument and you'd be able to tell the people's level of satisfaction or dissatisfaction with that with that item. I think I really appreciate Ray, you putting this forward and bringing the community in in order to making it, you know, trying to get people, get all of the information out there so that people will feel more open up to what is going to be done once it's finally done. But if you don't have people on board and you're just kind of trying to get it done this year, you're going to have a lot more obstacles and you're going to have a lot more opposition. And that's not really what what you want to have. I kind of understand that. I think one of the things that Peggy mentioned in her comment was that or that came up when when Peggy was commenting was future boards need to be on on board with what's going on here. And I think if more people were in favor of the things that were being done and the order that they were being done on, then I don't think that you would have a problem with the new board coming in and putting a halt to everything that you've spent all this time trying to work on. I had a comment to make about Ann's comment about the dungeon, the dungeon look. And I think if you look at the picture that you have on the easel there behind you, the ceiling on that on that on that picture is not going to fit inside our sand wedge. You could not have that coffered ceiling with that hanging chandelier in our sand wedge. It would not fit. Our sand wedge has a very, very low ceiling. And that adds to that dungeon look. I suggested putting glass fencing up and taking down that the wrought iron stuff and putting glass in there to make it look more open. But ceiling wise, I mean, right now, the height that our ceiling is, and I don't think that you'll be able to, it's something you could investigate, but I don't think you'll be able to raise that ceiling without running into other issues. So to get that coffered ceiling with a hanging chandelier that you have in your picture there is not going to happen. And that adds to our dungeon feeling, the claustrophobic feeling that people are talking about as far as that goes. I think that was the end of my comments.
Okay, Brian, when when the survey was put together, who who did this?
Galus Golf.
Galus Golf.
They're a marketing arm of some of the things we do here.
Was that their suggestion, to put it like that?
And they do a lot of these, so they have a lot of different communities they work with. They work with JW Marriott, which is more retail. This was their suggestion to get it out. And we can definitely take the feedback and change it and modify it to more of a Likert-type scale for some of these other things.
Yeah, yeah, we could. We could keep that in mind for the future.
A lot of times when you ask a firm to do something like that, you have given them some guidelines and possibly the guidelines that you gave them was, you want to do this. And so that's why they lumped that question together. And really, I don't think that if you would have, if you would have asked, you know, can we break that question apart and put that on the Likert scale also? I don't think they would have said, no, that's not a good idea.
Absolutely.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, and and we appreciate that. And anything else, Wendy?
No, I think that's.
Okay, thank you. We are going to go to Arthur Taylor's. That's our next one.
I don't see him up there.
Okay, well, I'll read his question. And is there a more complete explanation of the changes to the snack bar? For example, there are funds listed for a new covered walkway, new upper level outdoor patio, but no explanation of what they are or what or where they are. Also, the new snack bar doesn't appear to totally expand to take all the existing pro shop. What else is there? Is there anything else down there in that plan? There is no upper level patio now. We've covered that earlier. But I don't think there's anything else in that snack bar. It is all going to be go all the way to the end.
Yep, all the way to the end.
So that that was kind of the idea for that. So I don't know. Anybody else have anything on that one? I think that covers that. Okay, we have John Teagarden.
John's on there.
John on there?
He was.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay. How you doing, John? We got a couple of questions.
Can you hear us okay, John?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
First one, just the justifications for modifications of the food and bev facilities do not contain any facts or data, only assumptions, need some backup data, facts and how assumptions were made?
Yeah, can I interrupt just for?
Sure, sure.
Question, I think pretty much all of mine have been addressed in all the conversations that have been had here so far. And I guess I guess my biggest thing is echoing some of the other comments. The numbers just aren't supported by any facts or or anything that I can see. And it makes it very difficult to see if it's, you know, if it's a true picture or not. And I think they're overstated in a lot of cases. But the other thing is with COVID nineteen, I don't think this is a good time to be doing doing a million dollar spend right now. That's that's pretty much echoing what everybody else has been saying too.
Well, that's that is the opinion of some of our members, so we appreciate that. Is there anything else in here? The one point five night, the second question is, how can spending more money on the golf course be justified year after year? Operating loss spent about one point five million, yeah, it's it's up there. Golf is our most expensive thing around here. There's no doubt about it. And, well, we have it. We didn't, we've spent a little bit. But we do have to maintain our equipment. We do have to maintain that course. But as far as, you know, turning fifteen into a par four or doing some of the other things, some of those other things have kind of been put on hold for now. But yes, it is our, it is the biggest loss in that budget. There's no doubt about it, the golf course. But it is also our main asset of our common ground that belongs to all of us too. So that's, I guess, a few ways to to look at that. But we are well.
Maintenance yard upgrades, I think, are great. I think those need to be done.
Yeah, that that probably has needed to be done for an awful long time, and it hasn't. But that seems to be the common, common theme a lot of people have. You have anything else for us, John? Any other questions?
Yes, well, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I appreciate all you guys are doing too. I know what it's like to be on a board with that light.
Oh, good. We have some committees for you, John. Just to get you started, and then you can run for the board next time. We're always happy to have new people. Thank you. Okay, our last. Paul.
I don't see Paul on there.
Vigiano. Okay. I'll read Paul's question if he's not on there. He's got a bold point out pretty good here, so it says, first one, please provide rationale for revenue projections used in the feedback. Do not make sense to the casual reader. I think we've covered a lot of that already. I hope that's been covered thoroughly enough. What is the square footage of the current sand wedge and its current seating capacity?
Brian already gave that or part of that?
Part of it, yeah. Current sand wedge is seven hundred square feet for the seating capacity. We thought it would hold thirty two when we kind of reconfigured that last time. It's a little bit less than that with the bench seating. The current configuration that we would hope to have down there would put the dining area in the sand wedge at seventeen hundred and twenty three square feet. And then the kitchen area for the sand wedge would be twelve seventy five.
And the seating capacity?
Seating capacity for the dining lounge and bar is a hundred and six people.
So that was before and after all of it. Okay. Because the next question is, what's new? What's the footage for the new sandwich? Next question, can you explain the three hundred and forty thousand for the remodel of the sandwich lounge seems high for a remodel?
I think that's pro shop.
Is that pro shop?
Because the other one's seven hundred.
Yeah, six hundred.
So that three forty is probably for the pro shop is what it's talking about. Well, that's a.
I guess he feels that it's expensive to remodel the sand wedge, I think is the point he's trying to make. So what are the components of that? I mean, I know you said what they are, but.
As far as what, the remodeling of the sand wedge?
Yeah, why it's why it's a seven hundred thousand dollar.
I don't think it is seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's probably six eighty or something. Because there are some.
Six eighty. Is that right?
Snack bar renovation, six three three, six hundred thirty three thousand dollars. Golf shop project, four hundred and ten thousand.
Well, one of the major drivers in that in that cost, I mean, you're going to have to basically gut that whole area, expand it all the way out.
New kitchen, right?
Will the kitchen be new for that?
There'll be a lot of stuff that we'll have to do for the kitchen. But, you know, it's just demo, new fixtures, new flooring, you, you know, the coffered ceiling like Wendy brought up. And when I talked to Craig about that, that rendering is off a little bit. You would never be able to have a chandelier. The coffering that he's using there is an inch and three quarters. It's more Trump Lloyd from what you see in the rendering is, you know, to kind of fool the eye. But the actual, you know, when that goes in, it's going to be inch and three quarters. It's still going to be a low ceiling. It's not going to, you know, the rendering does make it look a little bit bigger. You would never be able to do a chandelier that goes down that low with that low of ceiling. So there was a little error in that, but the the coffered ceiling could go in because the architect said that they never planned to do anything in the ceiling because we really can't. He said that that's more of a very small piece to kind of make it seem bigger. So correct that. But, you know, the furniture down there, if we look at some of that stuff, it's, you know, it's going to have to last a while. So, I mean, Tim Castor did put some material and fabrics down there that could last ten years, kind of like our current stuff with in the clubhouse is twelve years old.
Yeah, and three hundred and forty thousand does sound like a lot, but when you start, or six hundred eighty thousand sounds like an awful lot. But also know that, you know, it's not like we went out and got bid on this stuff. We had estimates given to us by the architect and whoever. This is not, yeah, are the some of the numbers a, you know, a wild guess on things? They have to be at some point, but I mean, hopefully, they're they're close to being, they're in the ballpark. And so, yeah, it is expensive. Doing anything is expensive around here. Did you attain, did you obtain three quotes for a remodel? Was dollar value projected, the dollar value, entire club remodel from last year? We have not retained three quotes. We have not gone that far with it yet. But that would be the next step if we did, so.
Ray, if I could interject one thing, one of the points you brought up earlier that I think is valuable is that the next step in all of this, if the board likes to do anything, is to get engineering drawings done that we would be able to put out to bid. And that's the point that the ad hoc committee that you described would have great value because one of the suggestions has been that we should do a design build agreement contract with, you know, a selected vendor that gives us the opportunity to do a, have a lot of input into the cost on a project. So the the project estimates that we've received from Pearson have been sort of middle to high construction estimates. And when the actual bids come in, you know, I think that will be, we'll have a good opportunity to make them lower rather than get a big surprise and have it be a lot higher. So that ad hoc committee would really help us control costs.
Yeah, that'll be an important little little step there. So, okay, Paul's last question is, can you explain the cost of the Northwest storage room? Seems rather pricey for what it is. Someone explain to me what that is.
The Northwest storage room is more, I believe, in the regular clubhouse remodel. That was based on the admin offices going out to the northwest side. And the architect felt it was important to have storage underneath that wing of the admin office. It didn't have anything to do with the sand wedge or in golf shop project.
All right, and so that's that's Paul's questions. Paul's another person that we need to keep in mind. He has expertise in a lot of these areas. And we need to be on his good side and bring him in and help it whenever we can with some of these projects. That's all the questions I have. I don't know if there's anything else, anything else we need to do. As always, keep sending your emails in and to.